In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10-4-6, PL 1975, C 231, S 1 amended 2006, C 70, S 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press, The New Coaster, on January 8, 2021 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 8, 2021. The Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skill and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Roll call please, Mr. Hastings.
Ms. Chavez Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Breach.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Mr. Lotaraca.
Here.
Mr. Remy.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Ms. Lozinski.
Here.
Ms. Etienne.
Please stand for the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight before we start the community, um, the committee reports, um, we have a short presentation at school. Um, if you could please come to the mic.
Madam President, can you hear me?
Speaker.
Okay. Uh, Madam President and distinguished members of the board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak for you today. My name is Vijay Saradi. I'm the founder of a technology company based in Monmouth County. We built a sophisticated and very useful software called At School geared towards helping schools manage the mental health of students and staff. I'm here today to offer the software free of cost to you and any of the Monmouth County schools for two years. Uh, I'll briefly talk about myself. I'm an immigrant. I came to this country, great country, about 31 years ago as a student. In my first job, I made about $4.75 per hour. Uh, this country was very generous to me. Later on, I was fortunate enough to work for many prestigious companies. Until 2019, I was the Chief Technology Officer, head of Data Science Department for the largest municipal healthcare organization in, in US. Even with my age and experience, I used to find life stresses hard to handle. I could see firsthand the kind of stress that children go through trying to cope with school, friends, exams, et cetera. According to New Jersey Department of Health, 5.9% of our New Jersey students have suicidal ideation. Suicide is the third leading cause of death among teenagers in New Jersey. Schools and counselors often do an amazing job considering the operational challenges that they face. Despite their best efforts, sometimes students fall through these cracks. For example, due to high student to counselor ratios, it is hard for them to identify a struggling student before a case becomes a crisis. The system we built is called At School. It is designed to solve that particular problem. At School is an early warning system. It empowers counselors to proactively manage student mental health at scale. With early identification and intervention, schools can reduce the dropout rates, prevent self harm, and improve student well-being. It has many capabilities such as risk signal analysis, industry standard mental health screenings, case management, anonymous reporting, referrals, social emotional learning, and coping skills. Uh, this is what we are offering you. Use of the software for two years. At the end of that period, we may offer you additional years for free, or you could purchase the software, or you can simply cancel it. You own your data. We do not advertise or sell your data. Data will be wiped clean at the end of the period. Uh, the software has an opt-out functionality. That means if a counselor and principal approves, a student or a, uh, student or parent, they can simply opt out of the system, right? So, uh, they'll be completely out and their data will be purged. So, uh, in return, what we'll be looking from you is put in a good word among your colleagues, share your experience, you, uh, now how you like the software whenever you can. That's all.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I have a question. Um, you said it's free for two years. You're offering it to us, and then what would the cost be after those two years?
Uh, ma'am, is it okay if I follow up, if I get back to you with an answer? Because that particular information is our intellectual property since we, my hope is to give you the software for free in perpetuity. We say two years simply because, you know, I don't want to guarantee, you know, promise you anything more than that, but I will give you in writing exactly what we charge other people.
Do you have written materials?
Yeah.
As well that can be provided to the board?
Yes, sir. We will provide that data. Yeah. Anything else?
Are there any additional questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we're going to have the, um, committee reports. Um, Mr. Lotaraca?
Thank you. The Finance Committee met, uh, first agenda item, we're starting to work on the 2022 budget. Um, typically, uh, we'll be freezing the budget at the end of December. Uh, and staff been advised to get all the requisitions for materials in prior to that date. Although grant accounts will remain open, but then we can see where we are with, uh, with regard to, uh, all those accounts frozen. Uh, the committee did ask, we'd, we'd like to see a status of, in light of what's occurred so far this year, any, uh, resignations and retirements and the potential savings, whether the position has been replaced or if it's not been replaced, what do we have as, as a starting point there as we move into more in-depth, uh, analysis over the next few months? Uh, we'll be looking at, uh, a budget cut in 2022 based on the S 2 bill of about 6.6 million. I was going to say seven, 6.6 million. Um, we'll, we will also then come back and, um, uh, I'll, I'll give you some information on where Asbury Park is in terms of the percentage we are paying toward our, our state, uh, required amount, our local fair share, and therefore we'll have those discussions about what, oh, what we'll do to increase our contribution to get closer to what every other, uh, county in Monmouth County is paying in terms of a percentage toward their fair share. Uh, the second point with regard to substitutes, uh, the administration did look at a survey what's being paid, they're recommending, uh, we increase substitute pay to $105 per day. Uh, the committee agreed with that. Uh, I, now that I think about it, I'm not sure if I saw that on the agenda tonight, or Jeff?
No, we're waiting on a contract from CalAid to make the adjustment so that the, uh, right numbers are reflected.
Okay, so we will be, we will be requesting that from you, uh, at a later date. With regard to, uh, architectural services, uh, we received submissions from, uh, four architectural firms, DeCara Rabino, P S and S, um, I always say Spiezel or Spot Spiezel, and SSP, and their hourly rates were all consistent, uh, $175 an hour, 180, 170, and 165 respectively. Uh, a subcommittee, including Chair of Building and Grounds, myself as Chair of Finance, uh, and the Vice President, uh, the Board, uh, interviewed SSP, our current architect, and the President, yes, was there. Uh, and we've conducted those, uh, interviews and, uh, made a determination of what we will recommend in executive session, and as at council, what we...
Yeah, to the extent that there's going to be additional discussion, yes, it would be appropriate for executive session under the contracts and legal advice exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you. Uh, very good news with regard to, uh, solar, Bradley Thurgood Marshall, Dr. Martin Luther King, Upper Elementary, all completion and installation of solar panels, and they've been connected to the JCPN L grid, so we'd like to commend the administration as well as Solar Landscape, our, uh, our contractor for getting that done in an extremely timely fashion. We're waiting for final electrical inspection, and we still have the high school to complete, and that should be done, uh, by the end of this month. Uh, the only other discussion was, again, there, there's been some disparity among administrative assistant positions, so whether they were confidential or non-confidential, the administration has done that review, and, uh, the, the committee is going to be recommending that, um, a few positions then be identified, uh, formally as confidential as they are consistent with other positions that already are, uh, formally identified, uh, as confidential positions. So we support, uh, that move, and that's something else then that will be further discussed and then recommended. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lotaraca. Are there any questions or comments? Uh, Mr. Remy, can you do Buildings and Grounds?
All right. Um, so Buildings and Grounds met, um, currently there are no, um, facility use requests. Um, as Ms. Lotaraca said, with the solar, um, landscape, Bradley Thurgood Marshall, Dr. Martin Luther King Elementary, um, have all completed installation of all panels and have been connected JCPN L grid and the high school waiting, um, around the weekend, November 29th. Uh, we also discussed the architectural services. Um, we did meet with, um, two architectural firms, uh, Tuesday, and like we said, we're going to go into executive discussion and discuss which ones we're going to pick. Also, um, Asbury Park High School Stadium repairs. Administration had received additional quotes for cement repairs at the stadium. The initial quote for repairs to five areas was approximately $95,000. Quotes for the same repairs from two additional vendors came in at $11,000 and $23,000. And that's all for the agenda that we had for Buildings and Grounds.
Thank you, Mr. Remy. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Cook?
Good evening, everyone. There are no new agenda items for this month.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Breach? Homecoming is next Thursday. 10 o'clock at Asbury Park High School. Hope we can make it. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Remy, can you turn off your mic?
Um, which left? There isn't, there isn't any, this is a second, I think it's a second reading, right, Jeff, on the policy?
Yeah, it's the second reading from alert 225.
Yeah.
That was provided by Strauss Esmei, and again, those were changes that were mandatory based on executive orders from the governor or legislative changes. Uh, and the committee also continued a discussion on, uh, technology devices and the one-to-one initiative and how we handle lost or damaged Chromebooks and, and that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. That concludes our committee reports. At this time, we're going to open the, um, the mic and the floor up to public participation. Please come to the mic, state your full name and your current address. You have three minutes.
Tracy Rogers, Soul Avenue. Uh, first, I want to thank Dominic. Uh, that was a great report. Uh, when we asked him about things being addressed and certain things, the teacher substitute and, uh, the buildings, the buildings and, uh, grounds, I'm sorry, the, uh, the engineering reports. So, this is type of response. We have to get more, more efficiently. I know there's going to be a lot of things on the table. We can't use the, uh, ideal that we've been in the past so long, we got to get, we have to expedite these things for these kids. Uh, you know, we, we've all had a last, a, a, a bad week, to say the least, with, with our school brand. And what I want people to realize is that we have to be people that are going to come together to fix solutions in this community. Everything we do has to be around what is best for this community, what is best for these kids. And it's until we realize that we're adults, and, you know, I come up here, I go to the city council, you know, people, people may not like me, but I've never asked anybody for a dime. I do this because I love this community, I'm invested in this community, and I want the best out of this community. And what we want to see is that same thing. When we're looking at issues that come up, we have to turn around and reflect who we are. This is Blue Bishop. Let's realize what we're going to be. We're going to have incidents, and we're going to have tragedy. Our name is all over the state, but we are here to educate these kids, give them the opportunity, and there are community people here that want to be invested, and we have to reach out to them and let them know we need their help. So the continual effect of how we get there is to look at making sure we're working together. And that means we all have to put our egos aside, leave them at the door, and get this work done. I'm the first person, and I do it. I, I went to that city council for five years. We got, we got, uh, rent, uh, affordable housing, we have a rent control bill, and everybody come out because they're mending it this Tuesday to talk about even doing more. I push, and I push hard for everything that's right for this community, and I expect each and every one of anybody in this room, and if you don't want to do that, then you can leave, but I'm going to give you the opportunity to do it and not be chastised for speaking out. So I want to thank everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Good evening. My name is Mrs. LaShawn Anderson Bray. I live in Asbury. Once again, I'm here about my daughter, Janasia Bray. Um, I spoke to Ms. Baumgartner. She's not very open to speak to me. I've been asking from the beginning about Janasia's pictures. No one told me about that. The same way you all speak about sports is the same way I feel about milestones in my daughter's life. Like, pictures mean a lot to me because they're milestones of her education. Sports she's not in. Then the teachers, they're not speaking. They're asking how long she's on home instruction. You all had the paperwork and everything since the beginning. She's on home instruction due to health. It's not like she's just on home instruction. I went to the back to school, I was horrified, mortified of the things that they were talking about, that these kids are doing in school, and then you have seventh through 12th grade in there. I don't know what you're feeding the kids, you talk about behavioral problems, but you're feeding the kids, they're probably angry, they're hungry. Then you talk about you want the children to be successful, but how can you be successful if you can't survive? They're not surviving. I think back all the time when I went to school as to now when my daughter's in school, we had less funding, but we had more, and he was educated. I get so sick and tired of my daughter coming home every year to tell me she's out of school because Christopher Columbus discovered America. Like, what history are we teaching these children? We go back to Martin Luther King, but we just stomp all over that dream. What about what's going on today? These children's history, what they need to know? They don't even know how to fill out applications, but you have career days, they're having kids, they're doing all this stuff. What is the school really implementing? Then you have security here, you have all this going on, but school, public school is free for the children, but at the expense of the children. Because really, what are they successful in? If they get a scholarship for a sport or something, then they come back here, and then what happens? Somebody in their family gets murdered or something, then they have retaliation, then bam, there goes their scholarship. Was it worth it? I mean, are we really, are the children really succeeding? Do you feel like they're succeeding? Thank you.
Good evening. Um, Madam President, and I would like to take this time to say thank you for your service, you, uh, and the entire board who, who's here for the kids of this community. Mrs. Anderson, I know you two guys are leaving the board, so I want to congratulate Mr. Saunders, Ms. Cook, and also Mrs. Ricks on your being chosen, winning the last election. Um, I'm here today because I want to talk to you guys about a follow-up from the last time I was here. We spoke about, I spoke about, um, a process that I was involved in with the school reference to a coaching position, as you all know. Um, I think that there was some bias towards me in reference to that, um, appointment, and again, I just, I wanted to go through the process to find out exactly what happened. So with that being said, uh, Mr. Hastings, I have something that I'd like to give to What those are, uh, Madam President, they are ethics charges that I am presenting against a couple of your board members for, I think, their unnecessary involvement and, um, some things that they said. Uh, so, at this point, um, I submitted paperwork to the School Board Ethics Committee, um, so I guess you guys will be hearing something in the very near future, and as board members, I think if you err on the side of making decisions based on what's best for the children, I think you'll never get involved in ethics charges or other things that community members will come to you in reference to negative behavior. You all, you all do a tremendous job volunteering your time, being a part of this community. But I think sometimes we forget that we're a part of the community because you sit there, and people from the community come and they speak at this microphone, and very rarely, very rarely do they receive a response. I think sometimes somebody should at least acknowledge them, say something, respond to them, because people are hurting. People feel the need to come here and speak to you. People oftentimes talk about the lack of community support. Well, when they come here and they address you and nobody responds to them, what do they say? What do they think when they leave? So, I mean, I know you can't commit and put yourselves in the awkward situation, but say something, say enough to them, um, to let them know that you are interested, that you are concerned, that you are going to take what they say seriously. My time? So, thank you guys very much. Um, good luck to you guys, good luck to the new appointments that will be coming in, in the new year, and good luck to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner.
Eric Schneider, 658 Denise Court, Rick, New Jersey. Good evening. I am currently employed at the Asbury Park High School as an eighth grade teacher. I'm also coaching wrestling for the middle school. Due to recent events in the athletic department, the coaching assignments were altered, and now each of us is coaching without an assistant. Wrestling is a contact sport, and the chance of injury is high. In the unfortunate case of an injury that requires a hospital visit, one coach needs to accompany the student athlete while the other remains with the rest of the team. Additionally, with a growing program, supervision at matches and practices will be difficult for one person to do. We have brought these concerns to the athletic department, and we're told that no further hiring will be done at this time. If we are all here for the children and their best interests, why would we not take every step necessary to ensure their safety while they participate in athletics? Thank you.
Are there any additional comments? Do we have any phone calls or emails?
We have no emails at this time. Nor do we have any phone calls.
Thank you. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act allows for the exclusion from discussion at the public participat, at the public portion of a meeting of certain matters as outlined below, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education wishes to discuss such matters made and will make such discussions public when a proper conclusion has been reached, now therefore it be resolved that on November 18th, 2021, the Asbury, in, at Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose as outlined and described below, upon return, action will not be taken.
And for the members of the public and the community who are here this evening, the Board is going to be going into executive session to discuss confidential matters concerning personnel, uh, school security and safety, collective bargaining, contracting, potential litigation, and matters of attorney-client privilege. It's anticipated that the Board will be in executive session for approximately 20 to 25 minutes.
I'll move it. All in favor? In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10-4-6, PL 1975, C 231, S 1 amended 2006, C 70, S 2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and The New Coaster on January 8, 2021 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed in the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 8, 2021. The As... Huh? Okay. The Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skill and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Roll call please, Mr. Hastings?
Ms. Chavez Anderson.
I'm here.
Ms. Breach.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Mr. Lotaraca.
Here.
Mr. Remy.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Ms. Lozinski.
Here.
Ms. Etienne.
Here. Um, yes, Ms. Chavez Anderson. Good evening, everyone. This is our, um, 7 o'clock meeting. So that everyone can hear what we are saying, we need you to silence your phones, and we also need you to be quiet, please. No conversations. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. May we stand for the flag? Okay, we have two presentations, Student of the Month and CTE.
Good evening, Madam President. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November Board Meeting. One of the things that I would, I'm going to start doing is each month recognizing students having presentations of our programs here in Asbury Park. With that being said, this month, each school will be recognizing a Student of the Month to be recognized at each board meeting each month. So to those families of the students that are here, and to those in the audience, please, let's give the staff, the principals, they will come up. We will have a certificate, and we would like the families to come up in order to take a photo with the building principal as they come up and speak. Following the Student of the Month, we will have a presentation by one of our CTE programs, which is up on the board for you to see, by Mrs. Gogan, one of our lead educators in the district. So, first, school up. Ms. Thea Byers, Jackson Byers, from Bradley Elementary.
Hello, is this thing on? I am Ms. Thea M. Jackson Byers. I am the proud principal of Bradley Elementary School. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce our Student of the Month. I would like a third-grade student, Derek Martinez Martinez, and his family to come up. He is our Bradley Elementary School Student of the Month. Congratulations, Derek.
Each student will be getting a certificate as well as a district pen, pending. Next up, Mr. Perry Medina from MLK Upper Elementary.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Mr. Perry Medina, principal of MLK Upper Elementary, and it is my true pleasure and great honor to introduce Alondra Machuca Cruz as our Student of the Month. Alondra? For the record, she is awesome.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Lauren Jackson, the principal of Thurgood Marshall Elementary School. And our Student of the Month is a third-grader, an exceptionally young man from Mrs. Jackie Vasico Knox's homeroom, Mr. Joshua Examo. He is running late, mom did just call me, and they are on their way. So on behalf of him and his family, we will accept the award at this time. So a round of applause for him.
For the high school, we have Ms. Nancy Estrada, one of the coaches, come on behalf.
Good evening. On behalf of Principal Blom Gardner and Asbury Park High School, we are more than pleased to announce the Peter Altador, Student of the Month for Asbury Park High School. He entered our district as an ELL student, and now he is in honors, in all honors classes.
Next up, let's give those students a round of applause. Next up, we will have our presentation on one of our CTE programs in the district. Mrs. Gogan? You could come up.
Can anyone hear me? I'm pretty loud, so I'll be. Is it roomable? Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mrs. Gogan, and I have been a nurse for 32 years. I started out at the middle school, loving my school nurse job, until they came one day and they said, "We want you to open up an academy." And I said, "What?" They said, "A health academy, the kids listen to you." I said, "I'm four foot 11 and I'm adorable, everyone will listen to me," and they usually do. So, these are my wonderful students. Right now, with the assistance of the superintendent, thank you, and Dr. Howard, now we also have the seventh and eighth graders, which we see. So now that's wonderful because it's a precursor to seeing which of those students wants to be in the ninth grade for the allied health. Because once a student decides to go into an academy because they want to, they'll succeed. Years ago, that wasn't always the case. So we have numerous academies that hopefully will be able to come, and you'll be able to see. So I want to introduce you to some of my students, Peter Altador. Miss Ariane Garcia. Navia Ruiz. My future Jones. Ariani Gonzalez Shaq. Leslie Quiros. And Zonia Tepalida. So again, we have everyone from the seventh through the 12th grade. Seventh and eighth grade are just a CTE exploratory group. The ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th are part of the Rutgers program. So I am also a Rutgers professor. So the students take the class throughout the year. Then at the end of the year, if they are eligible, which they are, they can take a Rutgers CLEP exam, which will provide them with actual college credits. And since it's a university, it really is transferable to almost any place. Okay? So we're just going to go over some of the classes here. CTE is Career and Technical Education. So basically, I am here to provide the medical assistance. It's not just training the students to be nurses or doctors. There are numerous careers in which if you like art, you can be an artist for drawing. You can do modeling if you're into computers. It's not just nurses and doctors. So it's a way to help bridge the gap between the student's high school and the post-secondary plans. The benefits is that it increases the student's proficiency and employability. It also teaches them real-life skills. Besides the regular lessons that we have, we have a 2,100-square-foot area with actual hospital beds, actual equipment. We have 300-pound dummies so that the students can actually do the simulations. We have simulations with blood pressures so that they could listen to it. We just acquired simulations so they could learn how to draw blood, so they could learn how to do IVs. We're working very closely with Jersey Shore. They are helping us, and Bay Shore, and they're providing a lot of equipment to us, which is very beneficial. Because in a hospital, you're only allowed to use equipment for a certain number of years, then it has to go to biomed. But if we're using it for teaching, then they're allowed to give it to us, even if it's expired. So that really does help. Okay. In regards to the classes, the first class is Introduction to Healthcare and Careers. It basically just teaches them about the healthcare, the system, communications, electronics. They know about Medicare, Medicaid. They know a lot of information. Careers and traits of the healthcare professional, and safety infection and control. This class is taught in two sections. One in freshman year, Part 1, and the second in sophomore year, Part 2, because Rutgers wants the students to be sophomores before they can take the actual exam. Okay? The next class, that is one of the most important, is the Patient Care Technician class. Now, this is done when they are seniors. And when they take this class, they are actually eligible to take a license, like a nursing license, they take an exam. And this will provide them a certification where they can work in the hospitals, they can work in the doctors' offices. And it makes good money. I mean, my daughter took this class because she's a nurse, she was in nursing school, and she started making $18 an hour. And Jersey Shore is willing to hire our students because, one, obviously, a lot of them are Spanish, they speak the language, a lot of them are Creole. That's something that the hospitals very need in a lot. So we have the six modules, which they learn patient care, they learn safety, professional responsibilities, they learn infection control, phlebotomy, so they can work for LabCorp, and they also work for EKG monitoring. With this actual program, Home Drugs in Asbury Park has allowed our students to be able to go and do clinical, and they actually hired my friend, Mr. Peter here. Yes. He's my trifecta child. He can speak English, Spanish, and Creole very well, so everyone wants him. And Home Drugs is also willing to certify our students as pharmacy techs. So if that's interesting. We're trying to work with, with the hospital at this point, and Big Brother, Big Sister is taking some of our kids a couple at a time. Because of the pandemic, it's very difficult at this point. We are also going to be working with LabCorp and also with the Visiting Nursing Association. So hopefully, we can get those EKGs and those other components. So this class is taught in two sections. First section is theory, where they learn everything, then they take the nursing license. And the second part is the clinical, where they can actually take a HIPAA certification that gives them a card. They take CPR, they take a lot of different certifications, NOTD. So all of this will be helpful for them to be able to get jobs. And the good thing about patient care technician that was difficult with other programs was they do not require a social security number to take the exam, which is a huge item. If you want to be a CNA or anything else, if you don't have that, you can't do this. So that's one of the reasons why we selected to go with this. The next class is medical terminology that they take in sophomore year. And it's basically just teaching them the Greek and the Roman language so that they can understand all of the medical words. When they finish taking that class, there is an Anatomy and Physiology 1, and brand-new this year is Anatomy and Physiology 2. And those are four-credit courses. The other courses are three-credits. So the Anatomy Physiology 1 and the Anatomy and Physiology 2, if anyone took these classes in college, you know that you had to go one day for the theory, then you had to go another day for the lab. So these are four credits, and I work with Ms. McMillan to teach this. So we do it upstairs in the laboratory. So this is very good for them. And once they take these classes, that means they don't have to take it in college. So that helps them advance. The PCT course that I had told you about is offered at Brookdale, and it's offered for $5,000. Our students don't have to pay for that. We even pay for the exams. We do everything for them as long as they do everything that I ask them to, which they do. Correct? Okay. Lesson plans. Just wanted to give you an idea. It is based on Rutgers, but Rutgers does allow us the ability to modify the course. It is an honors course. But I have students that were never honors students, but once they start doing it and they get happy and they get excited, they take pictures of their A pluses, they're sending them home, you can get a kid to do anything once they're motivated into doing it. So basically, they know we have the essential questions, learning goals. Everything that we do is based on the five Es. We have to engage the students. We have to explore whatever topic we're working on. We explain it, we elaborate, and then I evaluate on every single lesson that they do. Okay, everything is done in Google Classroom. We have been computerized for the past five years. This had nothing to do with the pandemic because we have to keep up with Rutgers, with their Canvas, with all of their electronics. And the district has been very good with us with allowing us to do that. Okay? Here is just a sample of all of the different things that they do. I literally have them for 90 minutes, and I can tell you that for 90 minutes, they're working. And they have the ability, that I put the lessons in the night before, and I promise you that the students half of the time do the lessons the night before because when they come to class, they know if their lesson is done, then they can do the clinical, which is where they get to play with all of the different equipment, and they love it. Here, we use quizzes as one of our programs. It's the ability to be able to put videos, to be able to put sound, to be able to put all different types of instruction. And the good thing is that if a student is absent, they can do all of the work, so they're never missing anything. You don't have to say, "Ms. Gogan, can you give me papers? Can you give me a packet?" They can continue with everything that exists. There is never extra credit in my class because they just continue to do the work that needs to be done. This is kind of what the quizzes looks like with the different lessons. The students have all of their standards. They understand exactly what they need to do. And this right here is perfect part of the reports. So I can actually look at each student, identify what their needs are so that I can specialize, differentiate, scaffold, and kind of help them to make sure that every student understands what's going on in the actual classroom. And what this allows is when I look at my lessons, I usually only have to teach them once because they really do understand everything that needs to be done. We do Nuzella, so part of the school goals is to make sure that all of the students are reading and writing every single day. So all of the articles are based on medical things of whatever we're teaching for that day. And basically, that's it. We also do math every single day because one of the goals for the students was math. So again, this is a great program because they can actually get jobs as soon as they finish school, and this is applicable. And a lot of times, there's waiting lists to be able to go to nursing school, to all these different schools. If these students have this, when the colleges are looking at them, they're more apt to put them directly in because they don't have to take all of these precursor classes. So thank you very much for your time.
Excellent job, Mrs. Gogan. Thank you, students. Thank you for coming out this evening. We do have Ms., I mean, Dr. Jackson, the, her student has arrived. So we want to do that. And then, Madam President, I'll conclude.
Good evening again, everyone. My name is Dr. Lauren Jackson, the principal of Thurgood Marshall Elementary School. And I am so delighted to award and honor Mr. Joshua Examo, a third-grade student from Miss Jackie Vasico Knox's homeroom for our Student of the Month. And his family. Family, come up. And, and family, too.
Madam President, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. I want to say, Ms. Gogan, thank you very much. I know all the work you've done to expand the program and define different things for our kids to do. And congratulations to all the Students of the Month and their principals. And their families. All right. Superintendent, do you have any reports? No reports? Okay. We have a monthly IB report. It's given to you.
Okay, um, we have a monthly IEP report, is given that? Why is it on this one? Okay, at this point in time, we're going to open the floor up to public participation, please come up to the mic, uh, state your name and your address, you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Arva Council, and I live at 302 Third Avenue. The reason why I'm here today is because, come here, Mari. My son, Amari, held me when exposed to COVID at school. And the reason why I'm standing up here is because, when I got the call on Tuesday, they told me that they found out on Tuesday morning that the person was positive. So I did my research, come to find out the person was positive, they found out on Monday that the person was positive of COVID in his classroom. This is the second time that my son has been exposed to COVID at school. The second time. I'm fully vaccinated, he is not, he's not old enough. My concern is that, when I get the call, it's not from the nurse, it's from the secretary. At the school I work at, when someone is exposed to COVID, we get the call from the nurse, not the secretary. Because myself, if I have a question about the protocol of CDC, I want it to come from the nurse, not the secretary, because they don't know. So I want to know, do you know the protocol when there's exposure at a school? Because it changes every day. I send my son to school for education, and to be safe, they tell him to wear masks, and they do. This is the second time that my son has been exposed to COVID. I really want you guys to look at the CDC pro- protocol, if you don't know what it is, it changes every day, it changes every week. And the next time I get a call, I don't want it from the secretary, I want it from the nurse. And I'll, and also press the issue, when someone is exposed to COVID, and someone tests positive, don't wait the next day to call the parents, call the parents when they find out. Last year, when my son was exposed, they called me at three o'clock in the afternoon, when I was getting off work. That means that he sat all day in the classroom with this student. That means my family was in jeopardy. I've been exposed to COVID four times, and by the grace of God, I've been negative all four times. So next time, I want to call from the nurse, not the secretary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Rogers, Soul Avenue. First, uh, that presentation was excellent, I think we have to look at quite a few different aspects of what created that, that presentation. One is the students, number two, I've, I've come to programs before where kids were, uh, given certificates and acknowledgement, but their parents weren't there. All the parents were here. That is the strength of what makes these children successful. And then, a powerful instructor. You can see the care that she is. We have staff members, we have community, these are the things we need to be, to build this, this community back and bring us where we need to be, that's where we need to be to excel. I bring up my high school all the time, because it gets national exposure, they're going to be on CBS again. The headmaster told me one thing, he, he doesn't like children who leave at three o'clock, because there's more that they can learn. One of the monks, he said, he had a quote, "Never, never do for a child what they can do for themselves." And the third is, we're as strong as our weakest link. That means, we have some excellent kids, but we have kids that are in need too. But we are a chain, that means we serve every kid in this district. That means, everyone has the ability to do what those kids have, and more. And that means, if we have to work a little bit harder, we should. Madam President, I would like to also say, I would like to work, and I, I'm gonna reach out to the Deputy, Deputy Mayor, if we can get some, uh, uh, the community in some of these restaurants to give these, these families dinners for a night out, to, to experience what we have, this is our community. These are the things we have to do. You know, I, and I, I don't feel like coming up here chastising, and, and I don't want to feel like it's chastising, this is this reality, I've seen it work, I've seen what involvement does. So when we all work together and get rid of nonsense, we could be successful, and we see it, we have it, we had some, uh, wonderful kids some up here, and we have to not look at the ones that are lucky enough to have their families, but everyone, we all are their parents. So let's, let's get together, and let's get this done, thank you.
Good evening, uh, I'm Board of Education, and Superintendent, new Superintendent, Mr. Adams, and also the school administrators. My name is Frank Syfax, lifelong resident here at Asbury Park, and live here at 1403 Bangs Avenue. There's three things I would like to bring up, but I know only you have three minutes, and the three things is talking about our African-American history. Number two, talking about our financial literacy program that Governor Murphy has introduced. And also, to bring back our civics to the classrooms, because civics is where our kids would be able to learn a lot, because when I was going to school, that's all they was talking about, government and all that kind of stuff. But anyway, I just want to talk about African-American history, a little study that was made, schools are not adequately teaching the history of American slavery. Educators are not sufficiently prepared to really teach it. Textbooks do not have enough material about it, and as a result, students lack a basic knowledge of the importance, role it's played in shaping the United States of America. And the impact continues to have on race, a relationship that really, it hurts our children. Now, I know white, black, expanded, I can understand that, but really, we need, just to get the basic fact, yeah, we talk about Martin Luther King, we talk about Malcolm X, Luther Parks, and all that, but in slavery, our, our, our black people introduce so many types of inventions, that make your head swim, but nobody really talks about it. And my concern is that, really, we just want to start doing basic stuff as far as our history goes. And I know that the Board of Education can introduce some kind of plan where you can start bringing this up. Now, next thing is the financial literacy, okay? Now, financial literacy, Governor Murphy has interacted, the law, whatever the case may be, and our children, at an early age, at an early age, need to start right in the elementary school, because they, our kids learn, they know about numbers, they really can do a little something. Now, when you go to other schools, they teach you at an early age, investments, and everything, it's just like, nobody knows about how to balance a checkbook. We really need our kids to be, to understand what this is all about, because out there on the avenue and everything, the check cashing machines are making a pocket full of money. Thank you, and just to make sure that you know, that there is a law about the Amistad Commission for our history. Thank you, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you, Mr. Syfax.
That was spot on. John Napolitani, President of the Asbury Park Education Association, eight Old Weathersfield Road, Ocean, New Jersey. After twenty-three years as a dedicated coach, I find that my appointment back in September, along with three of other, three other coaches, has been rescinded this evening. No, I didn't receive a call, email, or other communication in regard to this action being taken this evening. The lack of profi- unprofessionalism on this, on this dais is not surprising at this point. You did the same thing to me on August 27th, again, completely unprofessional, but I'm not the only one that this happens to. So, we can't charge you with discrimination on that, because you do it to every staff member, there's never a call made to anybody. Sir, you were appointed the Superintendent of Schools unanimously by this board. It's no secret that the staff did a survey back in May, where the majority of the staff surveyed didn't feel in the same favor, but the fact remains, you garnered the support of the board in the same fashion that Superintendent Lewis did in 1997, so let me formally congratulate you on this anointment by the board, that was very excellent.
Point of order, uh, Madam President, um, you should be directing your comments to the Board President, Mr. Knapp.
And she can read all that to him. With that being said, it's time to use the position and try to bring this district together. The fact that anyone on the dais thinks that this district is a warm and inviting place to come to work each and every day, you're blind. I never thought it would be worse than it was in the early 2000s, expending time and energy in ways to ruin the careers and reputations of people who have been dedicated to this district for many years, it's an absolute atrocity. An investigation into two of my assistant coaches that I represent, and the athletic director, is nothing more than a witch hunt, when you've already got the facts of the case. Bring those men back that have families, homes, and good reputations prior to this, back. I'm disgusted that some of the board members have such disdain for this leadership team, the APEA, that you don't do what's right by the district. I feel like no board member up here cares about any of these staff members, right now you don't. Look back to the boards that were successful and got things done, they looked at collaboration with the association and the administration, and I can give you several boards that did that. Here's a quick recap of the last six months, thirty staff moves over the summer, no educationally sound reason whatsoever than to put people in places where they don't know what they're doing, no notification of these changes. I, for one, got my messages on a plane coming home, taking my son from college, because they saw it on an agenda. The principal didn't even have the decency to contact me and let me know this was happening. This shows how unprofessional things are right now. I'll end here, because I see the clock going, and you stopped me a little bit, so I'm going to take a few extra seconds. I'm embarrassed for the city and my colleagues, who struggle day in and day out to come to work in this dysfunctional atmosphere. I worked in the private sector, and I've never seen such unprofessionalism as this. You should take a step back, look at what you're doing to this district, and don't blame me for giving information to a blogger that gets information, quit saying it. It's enough staff that are frustrated with the administration, this district, and everything else, all they want to do is get people to listen to what's going on, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sean Hamilton, I'm a twenty-two-year classroom teacher in Asbury Park, currently teaching fourth grade at Martin Luther King, I live at eighty-four Creek Road in Keansburg. Sadly, I stand here again at the podium, shaking my head at the dysfunction in our district. We're all deeply troubled by the incident at the stadium. Nobody needs that kind of publicity, we don't need another black eye for this district. But I want to know why has Mark Jirbino, the athletic director, Coach Matt Artizone, and Lamar Davenport been suspended, when clearly, they had nothing to do with the unfortunate incident at the stadium? I see this as a witch hunt, so I'm sorry to steal your line there, Mr. Knapp. I want to know when it's going to end. Our president was targeted with his staff change, so that no union business could be done, that was blatant and obvious, not a very good smokescreen. Mr. Jirbino, a very popular principal, and athletic director, and educator, was also targeted. Seems like he's floating out on an island somewhere, at least we have the knowledge that we have the NJEA standing behind us, he has nobody now, since he is a director and not a member of the Principals Association. I'd like to know when will this end? These are people that stand up for our district. I know in the future months, I'm going to be standing up here, because I know the target is going to come to me down the line, as a member of the Executive Board of the APEA. Yesterday, sadly, in my school, we said goodbye to a twenty-three-year veteran of our district, and speaking to her personally, she felt she was forced out. I love the solar panels, I love that the fact we're moving ahead with that, but we still don't have a working elevator in Martin Luther King's school. She has mobility issues, and she was placed on the second floor this year with the thirty transfers. A woman with mobility issues who taught on the first floor, doing a great job with her students, was moved to a second floor, teaching Read 180 with a non-functioning whiteboard, a non-functioning overhead projector, or a little Epson projector, and speaking to the IT people, that apparently has been there for years, and nothing was done to change it. She felt like her spirit was broken, twenty-three years here, and she was forced out because of the dysfunction of this district. When are we going to open up our eyes and do something for the children of this district? Each and every one of you at the, at the, on the board there, should be ashamed of yourselves for allowing this to happen. I spoke in the last two meetings about the process for interviewing a superintendent, the nationwide search that supposedly happened, and I spoke about my politics with Dr. Repellet, definitely having his hand in all of this, and again, I faced silence. I've been here for twenty-three years, fighting for these children, and every time I get up to the, up to the podium, I get silence, and I'm, I'm, I'm just confused by their, why there is no comment. This board needs to look ahead, if we can't do our job, then please resign, and that goes for Miss, our, our state monitor, who sits there each month, collecting a check, and I don't even hear reports from the state monitor about the issues going on in Asbury Park. To steal a line from Greta Thunberg, "How dare you." Thank you.
Good evening, one and all, uh, my name is Sean O'Scanlon, uh, 176 Hiersmille Road, Coltsneck, New Jersey. Uh, for those of you that don't know me, uh, I am a twenty-year veteran here, teacher here at the district, um, in that time, I've seen a ton of stuff happen, uh, but recently, it seems we wind up on the news and all over social media more often than ever before, and unfortunately, it's never for the right reasons. Uh, the past two weeks, we've been on the front page of the press, on News 12, NJ.com, different blogs, different sports sites, um, and what troubles me the most, and many other people, both in and out of the district, is that it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, at least from the outside looking in. I understand people make mistakes, and there are consequences for that, and a level of responsibility that goes with that, and that makes complete valid sense. But, it seems like in addition to the person directly involved, we're also suspending assistant coaches who weren't there and weren't involved, one of which was a former student, and a success story from our district, and also an athletic director who wasn't there and wasn't involved, and none of that really makes sense. It's on par with me wanting a kid suspended from my class for something that happened when they weren't even there, it's unfair. Shouldn't we be setting a better example for our students and our community? We live in a world that runs on, uh, up-to-the-minute news feeds, snaps, tweets, social media, and the district as a whole has been focused on using those tools, yet here we are in a PR nightmare. Sports is woven into the fabric of the district and community and who we are, and everyone is a watching and aware of every step that happens with it. But instead of taking the proper course of action that would have had the least impact on our sports programs and our students and culture, we seem to have disrupted the whole system, and in such a fashion that the appearance and the optics of it make it seem that we're either really dysfunctional, or there's politics or something here at play. In the digital age, it's all about perception and appearances. Why are we suspending people who weren't there and weren't involved? Why do we seem to too often let our differences get in the way of why we're here, which is to help our children? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Karen Lee Schwartz, I'm a highly qualified music teacher in the district for eighteen years, I've been teaching music in New Jersey for almost thirty-three years, my degree says Comprehensive Music Education, K through 12, Vocal and Instrumental, and I just received my master's degree in Jazz History and Research from Rutgers University. I've been the elementary music teacher- I've been the elementary music teacher in the district for six years, and I served as a high school band and chorus director for 14 years, from 2004 to 2017. Thank you. I have a few questions. Why are general education classroom teachers being directed to give elementary students grades in the subject of art, which they do not teach and are not certified or qualified to teach? Are there administrators or board members that think having students color, cut out shapes, and make decorations for bulletin boards, hallways, et cetera, is all that an art teacher does, and therefore, any teacher can do that, as well as assess those projects without rubrics and standards and assign grades? If that is the case, is it possible that possibly, other special areas, subjects could happen? If someone knows how to play the guitar and sing some songs with the students, are they now a qualified music teacher? I taught my students how to sing a number of songs in Spanish. Can I give them their Spanish grade? Why do music, art, physics, education, et cetera, teachers go to college and become certified and highly qualified in our content areas, if anyone with just a little effort can do our jobs? Is anyone aware of the fact that the high school band program has been steadily declining for the past five or six years, long before the COVID-19 epidemic, pandemic? Has anyone asked to meet with the music teachers in the district to ask what could be the possible cause for the declining interest in numbers? And if, based on their experience and expertise, could be some possible solutions to this problem? Where's the band on the Thanksgiving game this year? Neptune will come into our stadium with a full band, and we will be silent. Why has every other school district in the area been able to keep their band programs afloat even during a pandemic? Why are the content and programs presented by our music teachers so poorly attended by board members and administrators? Why isn't there a budget to ensure that all those performances are video-recorded, like all the middle and high school sporting events, so they can be watched later by interested parties and used by teachers and students to critique and improve their performances, like the sports teams do? Did anyone realize that the restructuring of the school district would result in our middle school band director becoming an elementary general music teacher? And that there is currently no instrumental music being offered to our seventh and eighth grade students? Did anyone consider the adverse effects this would have on our high school band program? Please let me know if anyone from our Department of Curriculum and Instruction or Board of Ed is interested in meeting with me and my colleagues to address these concerns. I leave you with this thought. Music and art programs are like flowers. If you don't water them, give them room to grow, and plenty of light, they will die. Please don't let that happen. Thank you for your time.
We are representing kindergarten teachers throughout the district, and my name is Lynn Johnson, 33 Peachtree Road, Oakhurst.
My name is Jennifer Hamilton, 84 Creek Road, Keansburg.
Christine Underwood, 414 Prospect Avenue, Neptune.
Ms. Hamilton just wants to hand out a lot to everyone on the board.
Is that okay?
Is that okay?
Is that okay?
And, at this time, we're requesting answers tonight in regards to Law 6A 13-32, which regards full-day kindergarten requirements. Can we please explain why are we not in compliance by having full-time power professionals in each room? The law states that school districts in which 40% or more of the students who are at risk, as defined in PL 2007-C260, shall maintain all existing full-day kindergarten programs have a teacher's aide for each classroom, and the class sizes for these classrooms shall not exceed 21 students. Currently, in Bradley, we each have 19 students each, with a shared teacher's aide. Not only are students in, not only are our students at-risk population, we're also dealing with the lack of instruction that was due to the lack of technology that occurred during the COVID pandemic. We're doing our best at differentiating for all learners, but not having full-time power professionals is challenging to work in small groups, and our students are struggling with independent work centers, which could lead to behavioral issues. Also, with no substitutes in the district, when a teacher needs to take off due to illness, the classes are split and make the class sizes much larger. This is over the limit, and there is not enough seating for this to happen. Are you aware that this is going on? When this law, when will this law be followed? We have been asking about this since February of 2020, when we returned to in-person instruction. Prior to the pandemic, we followed the law, and every kindergarten class had a full-time power professional. Just wanted to see if we're going to address it at all. Also, just a sidebar comment is, our Asbury family, the coaches, I really hope that you guys take a look at that, of the three coaches who were not involved, and it's their family life, it's their students, their athletes, who are very confused, and it seems that everybody would like some answers, students, faculty, and the coaches. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Hamilton. I'm going to take my three minutes to allow the board to answer the question about, when will we have teachers aides in kindergarten?
Respectfully, this is public comment, it's not public question and answer, so we're going to take your comments. If you have any more, you're free to give them.
I do have some more. I want you all to know that the kindergarten teachers love their job. We are the foundation. We button, we zipper, we tie shoes, and we love doing it. We teach them to hold pencils, to cut. We love doing it. But we need help, and we've been asking since February, since we returned in-person learning. When? I have another two minutes. I'm going to stand here, I would like an answer, please. We are desperate, we are asking for help.
I'll say it again, it's public comment. Should you have a comment, that's great, please give it, but otherwise, there's not going to be any questions answered.
Okay, thank you. We, we are begging you, board members, please. The kindergarten teachers are begging you. We love our job, we love our students, we love what we do. We need help. We are the foundation. We need your help.
Thank you very much. Excuse me, excuse me. We're, we're not being rude when you were speaking, please be respectful. Ms. Counsel.
Officer Young.
I do not want an argument, I do not want to fight, that's not why I'm here. I just want help.
We, we understand your concerns, and we will sure look into it, okay?
I thank you for your, your reply. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Meg Watkins. I've been with the district almost 20 years. I currently teach math, POR, and I love my job. I absolutely love coming to be part of this district. I love looking at my kids and, and then seeing them grow up, and then come to me afterwards and tell me what they're doing. I have been here as part of, as an educator in this district, and I love what I do. And that you should know that, that I enjoy coming here and, and wanting to see these kids just thrive. And I know my educators that I work with are on the same track that I am. With that said, it's been very sad, and I know that the COVID situation has changed things. However, we are missing our children. They're not there. They've gone elsewhere. Why? Why are we not tracking them down? Why aren't we finding why they're not coming back to us? We are highly educated individuals. Majority of us have masters and beyond. We have updated our skills. We will give our heart and soul to those babies. And yet, they're not here. And my question to you, most of all, is why are we renewing contracts for the preschool when we have empty classrooms? We have two or three children in a preschool room, and we're putting our money elsewhere? Why? You need to question that. Because if we get the babies from the beginning, we have talented educators who know what they're doing, who speak many languages, and ensure that they're trying the skills and training to achieve, so those children can be successful in life. Why are we offering these contracts to outsiders, and instead, getting those children back in our classroom? Get our classrooms filled, so that we're not walking through the halls and seeing empty hallways, empty classrooms. Shame. Shame. We're just letting the buses go by, filled with our children. I don't know what the others are doing, the charter schools or anywhere else, but I do know that you have long-term educators here that have dedicated their lives and livelihood and skills to ensure that we see success. And you, as board members and educators that are supervisors, should be questioning that. What's wrong? Where's the communication? Where are our children? Thank you.
Are there any more comments? Any emails? I'm closing public participation at this time. Madam State Monitor, do you have a report?
At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Adams for a consent agenda. Many acceptance of the minutes, Ms. Hastings.
Thank you, Madam President. Could I have a motion for Item 10A through E on Pages A1 and A2?
I make the motion.
Questions or comments? Is that the end?
No. Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Sabas Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach? Ms. Cook? Mr. Grillum?
Yes.
Mr. Lotarokka?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask.
Madam President, could I have a consent agenda from Items, all items on B1 through B4?
Ms. Hastings?
This is all items B1 through B4. Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Is that the end?
Yes, I'm stating on B1, Item 1.
Sabas Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Breach? Ms. Cook? Mr. Grillum?
Yes, I'm stating on B1, Item 1.
Sorry, B1 Item?
B1, Item 1.
Thank you. Mr. Lotarokka?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
All items carry?
Ms. Hastings, would you like to ask for a consent agenda?
I have a motion for all items C1, Number 1, through C5, Number 1.
Question?
Questions or comments?
Are we adding an addendum?
The addendum is on C5, Number 1. Thank you.
Technology, Doc.
No additional questions or comments? Ms. Hastings?
Ms. Sabas Anderson?
Yes.
Is that the end?
Yes.
Ms. Breach? Ms. Cook? Mr. Grillum?
Yes.
Mr. Lotarokka?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
All items carry.
Thank you. I make the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.